Good evening. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Dover School Committee for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. I'll be co-chairing this evening with Dr. Keo. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Dover School Committee is convening via Zoom as posted. Information on how to join our school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on Dover Sherburne District website and on the town calendars. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Community comments are an opportunity for the members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, two to three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. With that, are there any community comments? Dawn, can you help me out? If you see any hands?
So I see no hands raised. If there's anyone who doesn't know how to raise their hands and just wants to unmute themselves, they can also do that.
You still don't. I don't see anyone either. Do you see anyone?
Nobody.
I think we're good.
Okay, great. We will move on to the next agenda item. I would like to welcome the PTO co-presence, Ami Tawani and Ellie Beasley.
Hey. Hi. So my name is, this is my daughter's name, but I'm Ami Tawani. Ellie, do you want to introduce yourself really quickly?
Sure, Ellie Beasley. Thank you for having us. This is very exciting to be able to participate.
Nice to see you guys.
You too. I'm gonna share my screen, Leslie, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right. Hi. Okay. So first of all, thank you to the school committee members and to the leadership for all your work these last many months and the many more months as situations change. We're truly grateful for the time you're volunteering to help our kids learn and be safe. Thank you. And also thank you for giving us the opportunity to fill you in on what the PTO is doing to respond to these changes as well. As you know, the PTO is largely divided into three main areas of support. Teacher support in the form of discretionary funds and teacher grants, teacher appreciation and classroom parents. We offer student support in the form of curriculum enrichment and community support through events outreach and Metco Friends and Family Program. Of course, all of this work is dependent on a whole host of volunteers as well as fundraising. And I'd like to quickly take a minute to recognize our entire board. Our board, along with many volunteers, have been doing a tremendous amount of work to help our teachers, students and communities stay connected during this crazy year. So here's a list of our board members. So I'm gonna quickly talk about teacher support and then Ellie will talk about some of the other the other pieces of our PTO and then I'll take you guys through our financials for this year. So with teacher support, in a typical year, we offered up to $250 to each teacher and specialist for discretionary funds for classroom supplies and we're doing that this year too. Typically, we award up to $5,000 in grant money for larger initiatives. This year Ellie and I are working with Deb and Jim to understand what the changing needs are for teachers in both the hybrid and remote models. And so far, we've already spent over $7,000 in teacher grants. The bulk of that went to document readers for each teacher and we also purchased six portable whiteboards so that teachers can more easily take their classrooms outside. The plan is that any funds that we can't spend on our normal programs this year can be funneled into expanding those teacher grants. So depending on what programs get canceled or become virtual, reducing the cost and also depending on how much money our check writing campaign brings in this year, we can think about supporting other needs that might arise for teachers this year. And then, and then the teacher and teacher appreciation and classroom parents Ellie will talk about when she talks about the volunteers. So I'll turn it over to you Ellie.
Great. Here's an overview of our curriculum enrichment. Again, this year, or last spring, CE chairs met with the teachers virtually to hear about what programs they most valued, if any changes need to be made. We did a very thorough review the prior year and had made a bunch of changes to authors and different science programs. So largely, everybody wanted the programs to stay the same for this year in as much as we can. So we are keeping the same program lineup, but as you can appreciate, most of these will be done virtually. And the wonderful thing is that the vendors all have been able to adapt to make virtual versions of their programs. So we're basically doing now through December, scheduling those all virtual and then for the spring, scheduling the ones that are the high demand programs that we need to get on the calendar virtually and then we'll revisit as we get into the year. So a lot of these programs, when they're virtual, they are, tend to be less expensive than in person. We budgeted for our full curriculum enrichment slate as if it were to be in person. And then we anticipate that we'll come in under budget and we can, like Ami said, funnel some of that money to teacher grants and other areas. You can do the next slide. Okay. So we do a host of community events, support and outreach. Our first of which is going to be this Friday night, we're gonna do a virtual bingo night, which used to be an in-person event. So again, we're gonna adapt some of these events to be virtual or just look different, but we want to keep the faves as much as we can. Books from the Heart, which happens in February, we will do. We're gonna think about Science Fair and International Night. We have a great team of volunteers brainstorming with us to figure out ways to possibly do these, either through a padlet or breakout rooms, or we'll figure that out. Bike Safety Day happens in May, so it's hard to know. Maybe we will be able to hold that outside. We have, our directory this year has moved online. That has been traditionally a paper directory, but as everything is going virtual, this is a wonderful development that we have our directory as an app and an online offering. Our Make a Difference Club has morphed into Chickering Cares, which is a wonderful program that is now going to involve all the grades at Chickering. Make a Difference Club was traditionally fourth and fifth grade, so this is a way for all kids in remote and hybrid to get involved in different projects. We did a drive last month, the clothing drive, that the whole container was full, which was amazing. And this next month, we're gonna do making, collecting cards for lots of different initiatives. Food drives and then we are giving support to the outdoor classroom and a new Chickering Grows program, which is a wonderful program where we are growing all, although we can't all grow together, we're growing at home and parents could sign up to have their children get a Zinnia kit this fall. We're gonna have a winter project and a spring project. Council on Aging has also purchased and we've had donated kits go to all the classrooms and teachers so that the classrooms could grow as well. And there's a wonderful newsletter and padlet where we all can share our growing together. So just a wonderful community program, even though we can't be together in person. Next slide. Just a Metco update. We have eight students from Boston this year, K through four, including two new students. The Family Friends Program is up and running under Myla Clark. She's a wonderful advocate for Metco and has done a terrific job with this program. It looks a little different this year, like everything else. There's virtual events. They had goodie bag distributions to help keep the kids busy on the buses and just to build those friendships. So she also wanted to give an update on our, the Metco Scholarship Fund, which you all are very well aware of from last spring. It raised $58,000 for food and pharmacy cards for family in our community. And there's been several rounds of distribution with another round going out right now and then a final round next month. So that is still, still being appreciated and realized by everyone. So thank you for everyone's support of this. And our volunteers. Alicia Poe oversees our volunteers and she has a lot going on, which we are so grateful to so many enthusiastic volunteers. I mean, it's such an unusual year where parents are pulled in a million directions, as you all know so well. So we're so grateful for all these volunteers who still want to help out in so many ways. Hospitality used to be like sort of monthly lunches and breakfasts for the teachers, which obviously we can't do. So now we're gonna do monthly care packages for the teachers. You can see a picture of one of them there, which we did maybe last week or the week before. So that was really appreciated by teachers and we'll continue to do that. Room parents, we had a room parent kickoff yesterday, so we have a full slate of room parents. We'll primarily be helping with teacher-parent communication and teacher appreciation since we won't be able to have our traditional in-school, you know, parties and all those gatherings. Our new family welcome team has been doing a terrific job of setting families up with buddy families. They did a welcoming Zoom and brainstorming ways to make sure new families are feeling connected, especially with the challenges of the year. Teacher Appreciation Week might look a little different this year. Instead of door decorating, we might do something with teacher appreciation padlets, which was done this past spring. But we'll be sure to make sure teachers know how much we appreciate, how much they're going above and beyond. And we give support for Chickering Administration Events and Community Events and Outreach Programs. Fundraising this year, so as you all know, our, last year was supposed to be an auction year and our auction unfortunately had to be canceled. So this year is a check writing year. We debated whether we should try to make it an auction year to make up for last year not being, the auction not being able to be held, but we thought it was too much of a wild card to try to do an auction this year. And I'm glad we made the decision to keep this a check writing year. So our check writing launch was actually this past Monday, so we decided to move it up earlier into the fall as opposed to traditionally, it was like January. We think this timing will be better, especially where we weren't able to have our auction last year. So we have lots of things in the works for our check writing launch this year. We also, as I mentioned, have the digital Chickering Directory, so that brings a little bit. We did a mask fundraiser at the end of the summer in September and we raised $463. And that was a really exciting initiative, what we partnered with Pine Hill and the Middle School as well. So we're brainstorming ideas for future apparel sales as well. And then of course, Amazon Smile. Now you can do this through the app. So those are just some of the ways that we bring funds in, but the largest of which is our check writing, of course.
Okay, and I'll take you through the financials now. So like Ellie said, we alternate between check writing and auction years. The auction brings in more money and offsets the spending during our check writing years. So the prior year always informs the current one. A couple of things to note. So this is last year's financials. Normally, we budget to bring in more than we spend during auction years. That was not the case last year. We budgeted to raise about $100,000 and budgeted to spend about $107,000. The reason for that is that the last few years, we've, we've really struggled to find fundraising chairs. The year before last, we had a very successful check writing campaign. So we thought last year would be the year to take some of the pressure off of the auction and other fundraising initiatives and figure out ways to make that fundraising chair position more desirable, sustainable. And then COVID happened, so the auction was canceled. Even still, with sponsorships and event tickets that families generously turned into donations, we netted $35,000 for the auction that didn't happen. So we raised less overall, but we also spent less as programs got canceled in the spring and our net operating income was about negative $10,000. So then looking into this year, because of our reserves though, we were able to still have this year's budget reflect a typical check writing year. When we decided, decided our budget last spring, we didn't know what the COVID situation would be, so we budgeted for a typical year. Some costs like curriculum enrichment and events will go down, like Ellie mentioned, and as those become virtual, but the board has agreed to increase the classroom and teacher support if needed. And so here is a summary of this year's budget. So that's all we have for you guys. We welcome any questions. Let me stop sharing the screen.
Do any of the school committee members have any questions for me or Ellie?
Beth?
Yeah, I was just applauding your presentation and all that you do. I know that the kids benefit tremendously and I know that teacher morale is really important these days. So thank you for supporting them as well and making sure that they feel loved and acknowledged.
Thanks. It's a big reason why we volunteer this way, because we love our teachers and want to support what they do with our kids. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I actually had, I wanted to comment on what an incredible achievement the Metco Scholarship Fund is. It's such a great program. And then I had another question regarding the online directory. Is this gonna be the format going forward? Or is this just a temporary situation?
I think it should be the, the way we go forward. I had a chance to play around with it over the summer and it is so convenient and so much easier to use than the paper one. I didn't think it would be. I was hesitant to make that switch, but it's, it's so, it's so easy to use. So I think families will really appreciate having the online one.
Great. And have you seen a lot of families access it? Can you tell? And do you have a lot of feedback?
The last update we got from Jean Drum, who manages that, I think there are only about 57 families who had purchased one, which is a lot lower than last year. I think that as, so the room parents are just getting started as they start to communicate with their class lists, the families in the classes, I think that we'll have some more directory sales there.
Great. And the room parents will communicate with the families, the name of the app and everything?
Yeah, yeah, they will. And they've, you know, I think what we'll, what we can do is add a link in the email that they send out to families that will be an easy way to do it. Otherwise, it's on doverpto.org under Support Our School. There's all the information there.
Great. Thanks ladies. Okay, on to the next agenda item, which is the principal's report with Dr. Rehnemann.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. And I'm gonna echo Beth McCoy's thank yous to the PTO. You really do bring the sparkle to the school and we very much appreciate all of the financial support. And I'll tell you, there weren't many snacks left just last week either. So those are greatly appreciated as well. Everyone loves food. So thank you. I've included my report. It's been a near three weeks since we've been together, if you can believe it. But we did have our virtual open house and had an opportunity for teachers to share their classrooms and for administration and PTO to talk with the families about the changes that we're undergoing, the challenges and the great successes that we are seeing and the, and the work ahead of us. So we have, we are well underway. The year feels like it's picked up a pattern. There's sort of a cycle to what's going on. There's a Monday and Friday twice a week for us that are in the building four days. So it's, every week is two weeks. So we've been in school, I think, 14 weeks by now. I'm quite sure it's been that long, but I know it hasn't been. We are looking forward to the School Advisory Council work to complement the Diversity Task Force work, which is starting up tomorrow afternoon, I believe is our first meeting with Dr. Keo. So we're looking to weave the work from that group in with the Diversity Task Force. Goals are underway. Professional development underway. We continue to hire some EAs to support the teachers in the building. Do you have any questions for me?
I actually have a question, a comment. You might have heard this by now. I noticed that your principal's office hours are Tuesdays at 1:00 PM. Have you offered any evening hours?
We have not. We've had a resounding number of participants equalling zero. So.
I was gonna, my next question, how many participants have you had?
It's been great. No, it's been awful. So Jim and I were talking today about having principals' officers on Thursdays. So when we send out the newsletter on Wednesday, we can remind folks and then offering an evening option as well. The trick is finding the right time that doesn't conflict. So we'll probably bounce off like a half an hour during the day and a half an hour in the evening or something like that. See how that would move out. Thank you for asking me to mention it.
Okay, great.
Leslie?
Yes.
Can I just, it's Andrew. Can I just add one thing? Because I noticed there's a lot of families here today and I'm sure that they're curious. I haven't been doing a principal's, I mean, a superintendent's report at our local meetings because I've been doing them at the JSC, but there may in fact be people here who were not at the Joint School Committee Meeting. So I was wondering if I could just take one quick minute just to tell people where we are on the reopening.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. So, so just, so folks know, we, we did lose a week. Our original plan was to return yesterday for our K3 students and our numbers ticked up, albeit slightly. And what it did really, and that we discussed at the Joint School Committee meeting, is it forced us to, to think about our reopening plan. And by us, I mean the Health and Hygiene, kind of Board of Health Representatives. We worked together on that reopening plan and in it, it said, if you go into yellow, then there's a two-week delay in your next move. So that, that, we went into yellow. So this is actually the second week. So if the numbers are good tomorrow, they were good last Wednesday. We were back in green. If they're good tomorrow, then we would in fact be open, opening up to our K to three students on Monday, the 26th. So I think that's good news and I'm, I'm just keeping my fingers crossed and I know a lot of others are out there, but we want to do it right and we want to do it safely. The other piece that's important to know is that the Health and Hygiene Committee, again, the doctors, essentially Dr. Vitale, Dr. Peterson, Dr. Beavers and Jill Fedor, the lead nurse, are the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee. They're getting together on a regular basis and I'm joining with them. So we are talking about trying to tweak our timeline a little bit to see if we can actually move things along just a little quicker. The, the whole rationale for the period of time between them was really safety, but we're, we're asking the question, can we be safe without having a six-week layover between one group and the next? And I'm confident that we're gonna be able to do that. So I will keep people informed. We'll send something out on Thursday, if in fact we are a go or not. And that way our teachers and parents know. That's pretty much the, the long and short of what we talked about at the JSC meeting.
Great, thank you. So the parents that are on here, they can expect to hear something from Dr. Keo on Thursday and whether or not K through three will return.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any other school committee members have any questions for Deb regarding the principal's report?
Leslie, I do.
Yep, go ahead, Colleen.
Yeah, I'm just wondering from Deb, from your perspective, how the space issue is fleshing out?
We are quite fortunate at Chickering to have very large classrooms and relatively small class sizes. So when we set our classes up, we set them up so that the desks are 5.5 nose-to-nose apart, forward and sideways. So if you go into the rooms, they are in rows and grids, maybe like the schools that you went to or certainly the schools I went to. So we are resigned to the big spaces, but finding ways for the kids to be able to team up and work in small groups when possible. We talked about three feet is best when you are masked. Excuse me, three feet is good. Six feet is better when we're spaced apart. But what the big change will be that instead of having, if I was a fourth grade teacher, instead of having my room and the room next to me to use to spread my class out all day long, I would have just my room, which means I have one less sink for hand washing. So that's gonna slow things down a little bit. We're gonna be moving around the room a little bit differently, but we still have our outside spaces and we still have larger spaces throughout the building, like the cafeteria when it's not being used. The gym, if they're outside, one of the computer labs has enough space that if, we need to stretch out. And each hallway has an empty classroom by odd sets of circumstances. So each of those rooms in the empty hallways have been set up for small group spaces as well. So we expect we're gonna be able to spread out as much as we can.
On, on that same note, how are you feeling about lunch? With the K through three potentially returning?
Oh, no, it's the, great. Lunch is great. So what we did is we took our tables. We have 42 of those half tables. Never knew that before now. And by splitting them apart, I can fit, we can fit 84 kiddos into the cafeteria, which fits all of our grades. So we have enough room for the whole first grade to have lunch together at the same time. We have enough space so first grade can all have recess together. Remember, we have the upper fields, the play space and the lower field. All right. Same thing all the way through, so we can put everyone in. We had to change the lunch schedules this week because why not change something every week? We had some, we had, before we had this, we had a time when we had first graders and second graders sharing the cafeteria for lunch. They had an overlap in there. So we rearranged it now. So it's all first graders back together for lunch, all second graders back together. Kindergarten is the first lunch. They have brunch. And the fifth graders have the last lunch and then they have about an hour in their classroom and then we send them home. So everything kind of got shifted back down. So there's plenty of room for lunch. We're actually able to open up the service area in the cafeteria too. So there's more tape on the floors and the kiddos, when they're buying lunch, can go in and pick up their lunch in the cafeteria, all socially distanced because they all know to look at the floor and look for the stickers and then get to their seats. So it actually is faster than the delivery system that we were trying at the beginning of the year where the cafeteria folks were walking around with trays and delivering to the kiddos. So we picked up some efficiency there and we still allow an hour. Actually, now we allow an hour for lunch recess, which gives us plenty of time to make sure that we wash our hands before we go to lunch. We can use sanitizer before we go to recess and we wash our hands when we come back in from recess.
Leslie? The water bill. The water bill will be high.
Yes, of course. Go ahead, Dr. Keo.
The, yeah, the one thing I just wanted to add, because I think sometimes it gets lost and I, I had to mention this the other night as well, is that our, our teachers are and building administrators are really knocking themselves out for our kids. They are going above and beyond the call of duty. And I, I think sometimes, you know, in this kind of crazy kind of world where we're all split apart, it's not always easy to see how much effort goes into all of this. But I know for a fact that, that this is, this is a big ask in bringing kids back. It's a big ask and I'm grateful to our teachers for, for being so amenable to it because some of our teachers have high-risk family members. It's, it can be concerning. So this is, it's not a flick of the switch and I mentioned that last week and, and I just want to reiterate that. And to that end, to emphasize that the work that the PTO does, that Ellie and me and all the, the people who work with them, supporting the teachers and the administration behind the scenes is greatly, greatly appreciated because this has not been a typical year. It's really extraordinarily challenging. And I just want to be sure that we thank all those folks because they've had to really think on their feet and talk about professional development. There's been a lot of professional development. OJT, as my first principal used to say, on the job training. And they've had to learn a lot of this stuff on the fly and have done incredibly well. So I just needed to mention that.
Thank you.
On that same note, I mentioned it last, or last meeting too, but both of my son's teachers have clearly excelled at and facing. facing any issue regarding technology. And I just applaud them, I feel like they've learned a whole new career and they're both doing amazing at it. Okay, so on to the next agenda item is the warrant report with Dawn.
So we just have ones on board since your last meeting, so you will see those from October 7th. Again, I, I think Mark right now, I think is our primary signer, so thank you. And Mark, there's another set heading over this week, just FYI.
Okay, thank you, Dawn, and the next agenda item is the fiscal year 21 monthly financial report again with Dawn.
Yeah, so this is your first peek into how we're doing in fiscal year 21. I sort of put a caveat at the beginning of this that you now will see, if you remember when we did the budget last year, we had the reserve for contract negotiations, which covered all of our employment contracts plus transportation. We have now taken that $215,000 and spread it to where it should go in the salary line items and the bus line item, so that it's now where it needs to be. We had enough in our reserve to cover all but about $10,000 in the transportation contract. And if you remember, when we approved the, the busing contract, it came in a little bit higher than I think we initially thought. So we knew we might be a little bit short, but we will just pick that difference up in our fiscal year 22 budget. And remember, it was small increases thereafter, so that won't be a, a problem for us to make that up in 22. As far as salaries and where we stand from an operating standpoint, as you know, it's been a, a busy fall with remote academies and getting everyone back into where they need to be. At this point, we have had to hire one additional teacher and one additional regular education assistant. As of today, that's two regular ed assistants that we've now hired. You won't see that reflected until your next set of financials, but we're making sure that we have adequate staffing to bring back the K three, so that's why we've had to add another educational assistant. That's not causing you too much of a negative in your financials. You will see a red number for a teacher's classroom, but it's not as much as one teacher would be because we had some, a little bit of some staffing changes that helped us out a little bit. You will see a positive salary variance in our teacher's special education. And that's because we, we mentioned this in June, I believe, we opted not to continue with a .6 adjustment counselor in your SEL center, but add to that an academic coordinator, which mimics the, the bridge program that we have at the high school. So there's a savings by not having that .6 and so that's what you're seeing in that line item. And as I said, there's still some special education assistants being hired. So once we're fully hired, you won't see that positive variance left in that line item. But all in all, it was looking, we're looking fairly on budget for salaries today. Some of the larger numbers for the new members that you'll see unencumbered are things like substitutes. So we don't obviously encumber substitutes until we incur them. And there's always some additional salaries for custodians for overtime, our summer staff and, and those are also not encumbered until they're incurred. So those are some of the big numbers that you see that are standing out. On the expenditure side, we are still early in the school year, even though it feels like we've been at the school year for a long time. So don't really have any negative variants to, negative variances to report at this point. We have done our initial projections for all of our building maintenance contracts and our utilities. The good news is our tech bid price for our heating oil came in at $1.43. We budget at a conservative $2.60 based on warrants guidance. So right there you can see that we obviously will have a savings in our heating, which will be nice. And we're still finalizing the amendment to our transportation contract. So that's a big number you're going to see that's not encumbered yet. We are working on, yeah, as you know, we had eight days where we would have had buses, but we didn't. So we will have a discount on those days and then we're not, we're not incurring bus cost on Wednesdays. Although I think what we're going to end up negotiating is those hours that the bus drivers would potentially be driving on Wednesdays are then spread across Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, for all the additional cleaning that we're doing on the buses. So Wednesdays will probably primarily be a savings for us as far as a fuel adjustment provision. Since the buses aren't driving, we have fuel savings, but the hours the bus drivers would have been driving are used on the other days for cleaning. I will bring that amendment to all three school committees as soon as we have it finalized. So the big news that I have to share tonight is actually in our out-of-district. And this typically can sometimes happen in Dover. Just keeping in mind that when we budget for out-of-district in Dover, because we do not anticipate in our budget receiving any circuit breaker reimbursement, so we don't offset any of our budget for that re, that reimbursement we know we're coming in, we do not pick up for any out-of-district placements that are potential, any that we, you know, any reserves at all. So anything that happens in out-of-district that is not budgeted ends up being, it looks like it's a negative variance for us. But we have the circuit breaker reimbursement to fall back on. So I know that gets a little confusing, but until we spend all of our circuit breaker reimbursement, circuit breaker reimbursement on overages, we, you're still saving your budget. So we are not in any situation at this point where we don't have enough money. As you will see, we're bringing forward tonight, we have about additional six out-of-district placements that are causing our tuition to be in a negative variance of approximately $470,000. Add to that, as we know with the spring closure, there was a lot of services that couldn't necessarily be provided in the spring. So we started making up for some of those services in the summer. So we did have about $50,000 of out-of-district services that we had not budgeted for, that we incurred. In addition, because we all know the restrictions on transportation, the vans that we typically use that can take four to five students to out-of-district placements are now restricted to two students. So based on that, we have incurred some additional transportation costs because we've had to provide more vans to accommodate our students. And right now that's at approximately $65,000 negative. So all in all, we're at this point in time about $600,000 over where we budgeted, but we are anticipating receiving a million dollars in circuit breakers, so we still have a buffer there of $400,000. So I think that's the takeaway that we're still okay, but that's just the, the nature of how we budget in Dover.
Any?
As a reminder. Just a reminder, Dawn, to the folks who don't know that the, the out-of-district placements are K to 12. So.
Yeah, actually, it's actually three, it's three to 22. So it's students that are the age three through 22. And in your, in the Dover budget, you cover all Dover residents. So even though there's students on your placements that are sixth grade through age 22, all those placements actually sit in your school budget based on how the regional agreement is set up. So that, that takes a little to get used to, but because you're, you're picking up all Dover residents and out-of-district, even though you're an elementary school K five. So that's why you'll see your budget broken up between in district and out-of-district because your out-of-district covers every Dover resident.
Can I ask, why was it set up like that?
I mean, it actually is a very conservative way. It, it allows you, the fact that we, you don't build, work into your budget, the assumption you're going to receive any circuit breaker gives you a huge safety net. So Dover does that because they just want to be conservative. And then that, actually, if you remember it, last month I told you how much we were giving back on your operating budget to Dover. That's just their conservative way to do it. I will say they've been talking about potentially budgeting, budgeting differently. But I will say in circumstances like this, this year, it actually has worked out to our benefit. Because had we not budgeted quite so conservatively, we could see ourselves having to go back to the town and ask for a supplemental budget transfer, so.
Okay.
Leslie, were you wondering about why we, why we cover the students six through 22?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, so that, because that's how the regional agreement is written. So the regional agreement to have the Dover, Sherburne two communities come together for six through 12 grades puts the responsibility of any of the residents in those towns who don't come to the region in school to fully assume the responsibility of those students at the, at the local level. This could be because if you had a, say you had 10 Dover students at the region out-of-district and only two Sherburne, you wouldn't want to share those class based on how the assessment percentages. So they're keeping it in the town where the resident lives.
Because we're only regionalized six, grades six through 12.
Okay, makes sense.
So I have a few other things, but does anyone have any questions on just the financials? Okay, then I wanted to update the committee too, we've talked about the COVID-related grants. And there's the two pools of money right now. Now, the municipality, the towns and municipalities were given a pool of money to cover any expenditures that came up in the town and that includes the schools. And then the schools were given a specific grant just for the schools based on an enrollment of, it was sort of allocated at $225 of students. So I was trying to just communicate to the committee how we're utilizing those funds and how the town of Dover actually has stepped up and has allowed us to take a part of their municipal grant. They have allowed us to pass through all of our technology expenses to their grants so that we could use the school grant for all the other software, PPE, tents, et cetera, that we've had to incur and not have to reach into our operating fund. And they also plan to cover any of the HVAC upgrades that we need to do with Chicaring. So that's another great benefit so that we don't have to take away from some of the other things that we're doing in the day-to-day school to cover those, those expenses. So we're very appreciative of their willingness to share in that grant with us. And both these grant opportunities, just so you know, at this point in time, do end on December 31st. So we're making sure we make use of those funds before they expire. Any questions on the grants? So Leslie, if you want my, I think it's capital next?
Yes, the next item on the agenda is capital plan.
Yes, and so in your packet tonight, you did have included a draft of your next five-year capital plan. It comes fairly early to Dover because the town of Dover actually has a early October deadline for your first submission. So we always bring it forward to your October meeting. It's usually hot off the press and we'll use the time between now and when you meet again in December to put a little more detail behind it and make sure that we're comfortable with everything of how we've placed it in the years. It is pretty much similar, remember we do, we do a five-year plan every year. It's pretty similar to where we had the four out-years in last year's plan, except for a couple of things that I'll highlight. In our plan last year, we looked at doing the flooring in the school, but by wing. So we were going to do a K one wing, two, three and the four or five. Given sort of where we are with COVID and the fact that we weren't able to do our upstairs and downstairs lobby that was already approved for fiscal year 21, we've regrouped a little bit and feel like a better option for us will be to bring all the hallways on to capital for 2022 and do sort of the lobbies and all the hallways together next year. So looking at that, that, just doing the hallways alone is about $85,000, which is the first line item you see for fiscal year 22. We will then go attack the classrooms wing by wing though in the future years. Just on our onsite insight report, there were two pieces of equipment that are at their, end of their useful life. So those are on our capital plan for 22. It's the heating water circulation pumps and the cold water booster system. I've asked our consultant to dig into those a little bit, do, do a review of them, see what actually needs to be done, if they need to be on for next year. And if so, obtain quotes for us, so we will have all that detailed information for you in December. Looking out in 23, 23 looks about the same, except I will say that we, the one thing that we did in 22 that we pushed out in 23 was the EMS software replacement. Remember that is hinging on the region doing their EMS upgrade and it's all approved. But with again, COVID hitting in March, that has slightly been stalled. And so until we get the system here up and running, we won't bring on Dover or Sherburne. So we're pushing that out just another year. I think everything else stayed the same. And if you look at 2026, it actually has zero and that's because there's nothing on the long-term capital plan for 2026. And there didn't appear to be anything that we needed to be concerned about to bring forward. So we will leave that there as, as it is for now and see where we stand as we dig into this a little bit more over the next two months. I will ask, if there's no questions, and I will be happy to answer any questions though, but that the committee does approve this initial plan so that we can submit it to the capital budget committee at the town level.
You're not asking us to approve this this evening, correct?
No, I need you to approve just this first draft, realizing this is a draft because I can't send it to them without your approval.
Okay, are there any questions before we, go ahead, Sarah?
Dawn, forgive me, I'm, I'm new obviously to the committee and I just noticed the significant roofing expense. I gather that's something that's, it's been part of the plan kind of as time has, has gone along. So this is not a surprise, significant outlay that's, that's being requested, this is something that's, it's been.
Exactly, and I, what we've planned on doing this year is actually having a consultant come in and do an assessment of all of our buildings. Because over the next five years, all of our campuses have this, this size project on their five-year plan. So we're trying to get a better feel of the timing needs to be and whether or not it is, we, we can go past the estimated useful life or if it's something that we need to keep on track. I will say, I forgot, one other item that we sort of pushed off a little bit was the replacement of the rooftop HVAC units. Because as we did the walkthroughs with the engineers, I mentioned that we had some of these on the schedule in the next couple of years and they said, there's, you shouldn't, they're in excellent condition. You should not be looking to replace those anywhere in the near future. So just to not put everything on her one opinion, I did push it off one year, but based on the preventative maintenance work that we do on an annual basis, she's, she's looking at us being able to, and all of our buildings surpass the useful life because of the annual, annual maintenance cost that we put into invest in these, these devices or these large pieces of equipment on a, on an annual basis. So we use that, and just to give a little more background to the new members, we have a 20-year capital long-range plan that we use, but it's our roadmap. So we let it guide us, but it doesn't mean that we do everything in the year it tells us. So as we get closer to the year in which something is scheduled to take place, that's when we dig in a little deeper, figure out what we need to do and start figuring out if we need to do it in the coming year. And if so, obtain estimates. So you do have two committee members on the building subcommittee that we will meet prior to your meeting in December and they'll get more information from us on the plan and be able to, you know, provide more insight to you guys too by having that meeting with us. So I think that's Mark at Brookstill, so we will plan that.
Well, I think it's me actually this year.
Oh, okay.
About that, but you'll reach out to either me and Mark or.
We usually, we actually usually meet with both of you.
Great.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dawn? Okay, then I would need a motion to approve the capital plan presented this evening.
Mark Healy, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, second.
Great, if you could all take yourselves off mute, I'll take a roll call. Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez, done?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. And Leslie Leon, yes. Thank you very much, Dawn, for all the work and time you put into that.
And just know I will submit that on your behalf to the town committee tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Onto the next agenda item, which is the October first, two thousand twenty annual enrollment report by Dr. Keo.
Uh yes, so you have in your packets uh a sheet that basically shows where our numbers were on October first. For those of you who don't know, October first is the, the date that the state uh requires us to kind of give us our snapshot. They know that there's a lot of transition and a lot of movement in and out, even as the school year is starting. So uh, so that's the date that they set. And that's really the day, the, those are the numbers that we work off of when we're building our budget. So these are important uh, important figures. And you can see that um overall, we were down thirteen students. That's taking into consideration our remote students. Um I did a couple of other calculations uh just to see sort of where our average class sizes are. We uh obviously with three sections of kindergarten have twenty point six-six uh on average. So that's a pretty good-sized kindergarten sections. Our uh grade one, on the other hand, because we have fifteen students uh learning remotely, we're at sixteen point five. If those students were here, we'd be at twenty. Grade two, we have six students learning remotely with, without them factored in into the classrooms. We're at seventeen point seven-five and with them, we would be at nineteen point two-five. Grade three, those averages come to seventeen point five. Uh if we included our remote learners, we'd be at nineteen. And uh fourth grade, they come to an average of eighteen point seven-five. Uh if we factored in the twelve uh remote students, we'd be at twenty-one point seven-five. And uh same thing at fifth grade, it's uh those four sections average twenty-one point two-five. Uh but if you added in the other remote students, we'd come to twenty-one point seven-five. So fourth and fifth, if everyone was in, we would be at uh the top end of our uh class size range. But nothing is uh below the range except for uh grade one, when you factor in that we have so many kids remote. Otherwise, we would have been uh right in the middle of our uh range of seventeen to twenty-two. So um it's interesting, we were essentially four above our uh, our marker that we use when we build the budget. We have the three-year um, the three-year projection and the one-year projection. And Dawn has created kind of a, a middle of that uh projection. And we were essentially four above that. So our models are working pretty good. And it's hard to explain that to people when they worry about giant classes and they see lots of real estate signs and they think, oh my gosh, there's millions of people moving in. So these numbers are really, those enrollment um projections are super important moving forward. And they've, they've held pretty true. You know, four off is not bad. We'd love to be spot-on, but we rarely are spot-on. But we're not eleven or twelve students off of our projections, we're, we're pretty close, so. Uh this worked out pretty well. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Keo? Sarah, could you take yourself off mute?
Dr. Keo, one, one of the things that I noticed on this chart, um and I imagine that this data probably fluctuates year to year, but there were significantly um more kindergarten students in twenty nineteen than this year. I wonder, do we have any visibility? How much of that is families that had made the decision because of COVID to hold students back? And how do we plan for when they hopefully re-enter under better circumstances next year?
That is a great question, Sarah. I don't have the answer to that, but Deb apparently does.
I can give some insight to that. One of the things, so each year we get the census data and begin reaching out to families in January, February and begin to see who's coming into the school. And each year, there's a number of families that opt to not send their age-eligible children to school. And that has remained consistent year over year. I was surprised as well. The number of people who opted to hold was the same as has been in other years. Um the other number that doesn't reflect in here is the number two, uh families that opt to go to private school or homeschool. So they fall off our roster. And I expect that they will probably return next year if all goes as planned. So that may have some impact, but it wasn't um a significant number of students who jumped out. So just in terms of the kindergartners, this was a year of, of an ebb or flow that members went to twenty nineteen. I don't think it had any reflection of the COVID.
No, our, our census pre-COVID, um we anticipate having fifty-eight kindergartners based on who lives in town and who um had responded. So we actually picked up a couple more students than we thought we had when we built the budget. So it just, it does ebb and flow based on um not, it, we, they don't, everyone doesn't have children equal it the same number of children every year, right? So we definitely see that in kindergarten. I will say that typically with the three kindergarten classes, though, we do pick up more sometimes at the first grade. And so we, I would, it looked that we probably would move to four sections um for kindergarten next year. Just because there is in our uh projections, you do see where some kids go to private school for kindergarten or the um, the Montessori's. And so we do tend to see them come back to um, to green uh in first grade. So that, that's a good thing for those classes that you feel like are already getting a little large. We will probably have to expand anyway because we will exceed um your class size. And just so you know, in grade, grade one actually has five sections. So um we just were able to pull one whole classroom teacher to do remote. But we do have five sections in that uh first grade.
Right, so that, that sixteen point five is, is not factoring in the remote kids. When you factor them in, it moves to twenty point two-five, which makes sense. And that's about where we, we had hoped to be. So there's nothing really outrageous or alarming here. But as we get closer to, you know, or deeper into the budget process, we will, will probe deeper into uh of these numbers in our projections and we'll have something. You, you might remember the, the chart, it's in your budget books from last year. That uh, it's a great uh graph that Dawn put together that allows you to see just what the three-year uh projections would look like on average class sizes if you factored it in as the three-year number or if at the two-year number or at the, the halfway mark as Dawn did. So that makes it a little easier for us to make recommendations to you as to how many sections we think we'll need.
On that note, can I ask you, Dawn, when do you do that uh stealth drop-off of the uh budget books?
Oh, so you'll get that um prior to the December seventeenth meeting.
Which is the early morning meeting, by the way. I think that's mentioned on your agenda.
Yes, it is. It's definitely December seventeenth and not November seventeenth.
Yes, yes, so um I asked for um an extension this year to get the two local budgets done. Uh so it would be really tight for me to, to have those done before Thanksgiving. In a normal year, it, it had been part of our protocol, but I did reach out to both chairs of Dover and Sherburne and asked that we move those meetings back to where we had a couple of years ago in December. And so you are, um Dover and Sherburne are both getting their budgets that week of December fourteenth.
Okay, great. Any further questions for Dr. Keo on the enrollment report? Okay, thank you, Dr. Keo. And the next agenda item is the school committee fiscal year twenty-two budget guidance. I would like to ask the school committee members to reach out to Brooke to let her know if there are things you would like included in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. And this is beyond what the administration usually brings forward. Um and the next agenda item is sorry, the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve uh the Dover School Committee minutes from September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty? Sarah? Could I have a second?
Second, Colleen.
Great, could I take it, everyone, take yourself off mute? Could I have a roll call? Sarah, Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark Healy, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. And then the next agenda item is communications. Uh, Dr. Keo, do you want to step in here?
Yes, those are just FYI, basically, uh we like to keep uh the kid committees cognizant of what's happening in the other uh districts. No action required, just informational.
Great, thank you. And the next agenda item is the December seventeenth, twenty twenty meeting. We just want to remind you that it's eight-thirty AM. If any of the school committee members have any items they would like included on December agenda, please forward those items to Brooke. Any other questions before we adjourn? That was fast, the fastest meeting this year, I think, right?
You're hired.
Yeah, nice job, Leslie.
Good job. Thank you, Leslie.
Thanks, guys. Do we have to pull to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. Thank you, everyone, for your time.